So hi, we're the core crew, right, of Invisible and there's a small group of us today, but we're going to record, be recording and sharing this with our membership list of around 1,500 people. That's the total number. So we have been working on questions. So it'll, it shouldn't feel formal because it's a small group, but people worked pretty hard on the question. So I'll be asking you and Kaylee the same identical questions. And then there'll be 15 minutes at the end for us to sort of chime in. I think with this small group, maybe I'll just have people raise their virtual little virtual hands, just so I know how many people have formulated questions. And that'll be about 45 minutes. Karen's going to be a timekeeper for each question, just to keep us moving forward. And look at, she will.
This is very high tech. And then.
How many, how long per question are you looking for?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, we're not totally, we're not going to cut you off or, you know.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yep. Just to keep us moving along, I guess, get bogged down and then there'll be some backup questions. So everybody ready? No further comments. Eddie, please tell us a bit about yourself, why you're running for county council and your two top projected priorities for your first year in office.
Okay, sure. Well, thanks all for having me and to everyone else in Invisible who might be watching us for tuning in and being engaged in an important decision we have in this local election. And, you know, for all of your activism and service and everything, it really is what makes this community work and grow and continue. What makes a home for all of us is where we participate in civic life and build and make our world together. And that's really the ethos that's brought me to run for office, living here and working and learning and growing for over a decade is what's led to, you know, the more and more as I've come to know the communities of Waukam County and working in public policy through our county government, you know, both professionally as a climate and energy policy manager at a local nonprofit and, you know, in volunteer times, my roles, working on half her housing justice and, you know, other issues. It's really what's brought me to a deeper commitment to public service and led me to step up in this role that I believe I'm prepared for and would be in a good position to serve the people of Waukam County and as a member of Waukam County Council from District One. So I, you know, I think this is a, it's a pivotal time to shape the future before us. There's obviously a lot changing in our, you know, our global climate, our political climate, federal opportunities coming down the pike with funding efforts, but it's going to be county governments, local governments that I think are going to play the most critical role in, you know, not just in our, you know, our zoning decisions, management of natural resources and our funding priorities for infrastructure. It's going to, that's really, I think, where the biggest job is going to be is, you know, hopefully if we do have funds from the federal government, it's going to be the county's role to distribute them, make, bring, you know, entities together and make projects happen. And that's going to be my major goal is strengthening infrastructure and decarbonizing, meeting the challenge of climate change and our affordable housing crisis, our shortage of housing. We have to build thousands of affordable housing units over the next few years to keep up. That's a major challenge. And so I'm going to be supporting, you know, every effort we can for nonprofit, non-market rate development and utilization of property, acquiring and designating and promoting the development we need, but sustainably. So a whole host of challenges there to work on, but I have the chops to do it. I'm excited about it. And, you know, I say, yeah, climate and housing are going to be, you know, the ultimate crisis. Of course, our, you know, our, all these issues tied together with that are on our water supplies dwindling and protecting, restoring them, like Waukam and the Nookseck River, a major issue. But what I've learned is how to navigate conflict, work together with folks despite disagreements, bring stakeholders to the table and craft legislation. And have had successes in doing that from the bench here. And I'd like to do that sitting on county council. So we'd be honored to have your support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eddie. And I probably could have started by also thanking you for all the work you've done up to now in your role at Resources and also for stepping up. Your introduction reminded me that I didn't say that, but I have deep gratitude for everyone that steps up to run for these positions. So thank you. And this question is right up your alley. The Landmark Report by the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says we have about a dozen years left to change the course of environmental degradation. Tell us specific ways that you will bring together disparate groups in the county such as environmentalists and Cherry Point workers in addressing the long-term future of Cherry Point Industries while also addressing climate change issues pressing on us. Please include the types of industries that you would encourage to locate at Cherry Point.
That's a good question. I mean, to start, I could talk about how I've, I've done this extensively. You might, you know, the greatest responsibility I had, you know, in my life and work for the over five years up to now has been around Cherry Point. I led, led the charge to establish a moratorium and initiate a process to update the development regulations for the Cherry Point Industrial Zone. Due to the, you know, imminent and increasing hazards, we were seeing oil trains started arriving in Waukam County just, you know, eight years ago because of decisions the Waukam County Planning Department made. You know, we were warning and, and doing everything we could, you know, through regulatory measures to prevent the, an oil train explosion from happening here despite that heightened risk. And of course, it did, thankfully, not as disastrous as it could have been last year. And, you know, that's what it's about is not just protecting public interest, public health and safety and the Salish Sea from these increasing threats from an area that's been targeted for expansions that of fossil fuel export that really don't bring an economic benefit locally. And so what we were able to do, you know, through sitting on the county council, though, it was first note, it's a lot of opposition from industries and other others in ways I think that were, you know, in part due to a misunderstanding of it. You know, the goals there were to be protective of our local industries, encourage them to be able to grow and upgrade in ways that would reduce the risk and hazard and pollution they're causing and, and support them in the energy transition we're undergoing, but with some limits. And ultimately, you know, after several years of that, I was, for the last year of it, I was able to bring all the industries and labor unions to the table through a series, a stakeholder group that I convened and facilitated and served as the leading environmental advocate and to negotiate the fine tuning of some development rules, ultimately to get consensus and support from those industries and a unanimous vote from county council as a result, that are in effect the most environmentally protective regulations imposed by a county in the US on oil refineries and prohibit a number of certain, you know, new fossil fuel industries, allow the existing ones to continue operating and upgrading, ultimately are, you know, good for the economy and for our environment over in ways that, you know, are just a one step and not the whole game. Now, climate change and the energy transition, a whole host of things we got to do there. I think we really got to look beyond Cherry Point countywide, of course, to where there's so many, this need for updating of our zoning code to allow clean energy development and generation from wind turbines, for instance, and storage of energy and distribution and, you know, modernization as part of, you know, a national and global movement, but where we're going to miss out on opportunities here to be, you know, the economic growth that that can bring and economic benefits if we don't, you know, within the first year, update our zoning code around clean energy rules for wind, wind, for instance, and number of other areas. So that's what I'll be focused on. And yeah, proud of my work there. I'm ready to move on to the next stage.
Awesome. Thanks. We are too. Okay. Homelessness. The number of homeless children and adults continues to increase as identified groups such as Waukam County, the Interfaith Coalition, family promise and school districts. Bellingham City and Waukam County residents identify it as one of the top three local issues to address. Describe three or four specific ways that you will use the resources and powers of the county council to address some of our homelessness needs.
Well, you know, to be honest, it's, it's really what kind of got me over the edge to step up and run this year was my experience in this ongoing crises of houselessness. You know, we know, we know what, you know, that, you know, fundamentally, our lack of access to affordable housing is a, is a major driver of it. And then, you know, as a result, we're seeing, you know, despite, you know, county, partly county funded, social services from a dozen local nonprofits that are helping hundreds of people. There's hundreds more that are being left out in the cold and have been, are greatly suffering and are, you know, left with few options. And, you know, I think the way that it's managed is by the city of Bellingham. I have a lot of complaints that can make about that. But on the county side, you know, it's really going to be a matter of, one, like out, not just out increasing and allocating funding, but really being intentional about where that goes for designating land for both emergency shelter needs and for longer term housing, supportive housing. And, you know, mental health and addiction services, of course, there's a lot of, you know, there's, there's good work being done, but it's, you know, it comes down to it, there's, there is the will, there's the attention I talked, everyone I talked to about this sees the need to address it. It's not a lack of, you know, it's ignoring the issue. But I think there's a lot of arbitrary and harmful rules that are put in place that are preventing people from getting through the door or into safe, safer situations. So I think we need to be really all of the above when in support of variety of organizations and whoever's willing to step up, like so many people I know who are out there serving and supplying and aiding people every day. You know, there's, there's, you know, you can look at like some successful models like Homes Now, very cost effective way, been able to, you know, build and expand tiny home villages. You know, those are, those are good halfway step. But yeah, it's like the first step is just getting people in stability where they're not being swept and disrupted on a daily or weekly basis. And then, you know, there's these next steps that can come, you know, longer term. So, you know, I'd say there's, it's, speaking generally about it, it's a really personal issue to me. I mean, I've spent hundreds of hours myself, you know, working in encampments. It's actually, you know, where I first started getting involved in Waukam County was, you know, in encampments over 10 years ago and more recently in the, in the crisis we saw this winter. You know, where folks I know are, are still, you know, are still out there every day, some of the toughest and most capable people I know surviving. And I think that we can work with folks directly, they need to be included in decision making. And I would be bringing those voices to the table when shaping plans for our county and working with the cities, everyone. It's a, it's going to be top priority from day one.
Okay, thank you. So the shorter question. Your platform largely parallels that of your opponent without saying anything negative about Kaylee, which I know you're, you're, you're committed to not doing. What makes you the better person for the job? What makes you differentiate you?
Well, I'd say it's just, you could look at my track record of experience here, working in advocacy. You know, there's been, I've been going to council meetings and organizing and engaging thousands of other people in our community to engage in, you know, in issues like Cherry Point, you know, and develop policy and gone through it all and sort of learned from the outside, you know, how difficult it is to make change happen through government, but also see what it takes, everything that it takes outside of the seats of the council in the limited time in public meetings to actually make things happen. And I don't think my opponent has that same experience, having only worked within government in policy neutral roles their whole career. Not to say that that isn't good experience, it's just that, you know, I think it's, I'm the only one here who's been actually, you know, advocating and fighting for causes kind of at every level of what that entails on local, local issues. And that's, you know, I think that's, it's the relationships I have and the lessons learned that are going to prepare me in ways that I know I can know, I know what, you know, I know what I'm in for, working on council, basically, through all that. And, you know, there's a, yeah, I don't have anything, I wouldn't have any, you know, and thinking in contrast, I mean, there's probably some difference of approach, whereas, you know, it's easy to say we need to, you know, bring people together, bring them to the table and, you know, work, work and balance interests with stakeholders and bring, you know, marginalized voices in and value equity and those things that we'd all agree on or say the same thing on. But I think there's, there's a lot more to it. And part of this is like, you also have to be really firm about what you're fighting for and what interests you're actually representing. And it's just, you know, fundamentally, my motivation for being involved in politics at all is because of being very outraged and upset and dissatisfied with how our governments are acting on issues like climate and housing and, you know, seeing where I think we can do better. And so, you know, that's what's led me here in the first place. And I'm not seeing this as like a career path stepping stone. I'm not interested in higher office. I just want to, I see that, you know, the next four years are critical and I want to make the most of them. And I think this is a place where I could play a valuable role effectively in, in, you know, working with everyone else in the community, a collective effort. And that's what I hope to do.
All right. Thanks so much for the answer. More stuff up your alley. What do you see is the best way forward for the county on water quality and access for our various constituent groups like farmers, the Lumian Nookseck tribes, small cities, Bellingham, especially given climate change and decreased snow packs and the predicted increase of our county's population, like 70,000 new residents by 2036?
Yeah, I mean, it's in our growing county, this is, this is an issue that's becoming, you know, increasingly, we should call it a crisis because, I mean, it is, it's, it's a slow building one that has been flagged for decade, you know, for decades. In plant, you know, in planning documents, you'll see reference to the dwindling dangerously low in stream flows in the Nookseck River. That's really, you know, main artery of our water supply for agriculture and industry and rural residents. And, you know, increasingly costly pollution and algae blooms and all of that resulting from development and activity around like Waukam, the drinking water supply for half of the county residents, all Bellingham. And, you know, these issues that I think, you know, have part of, you know, there's been an issue of just not recognizing them and not really doing what's necessary to face the reality. And what, you know, you need quantification and you need real efforts that, you know, conservation, there should and isn't be enough, there is enough water and should remain enough water for, to meet everyone's needs, you know, residential, commercial, agricultural, industrial, and ensure that we could have survival and restoration of salmon habitat and continuation of those, you know, salmon populations for, for, you know, the rest of time, hopefully. And yet, it's only going to happen if we do something about it. Now, there's been, you know, it's one of the most controversial issues that there is in the county that I've, you know, experienced in very, various stages. And right now, we have adjudication happening, which is a, you know, unfortunately, you know, inconvenient but necessary process that we have to go to quantify senior water rights. Of course, you know, our tribes are the senior water right holders, having been using the resources since time immemorial. And you have other major water rights holders. And, you know, the adjudication is going to be happening over years to come. In the meantime, where the, where the county should be stepping in is trying to support all those involved in, you know, having their water needs met with conservation and pollution prevention measures and, and, you know, trying to support them in that. It's not our role to try to interfere or undermine the process of adjudicating, you know, who has rights. And we should just, just, just differentiate between access to water and water rights, right? A water right to pull water without paying anyone for it from the ground or from the river is, is a different thing than having access to, you know, utility water service like everyone who lives in the city has. And we, you know, you got to distinguish that. But yeah, we just can't have limitless development because our aquifers are being drained, they're not being replenished with climate change and decreased snow pack in the mountains. The problem's only getting worse. So, yeah, it's complicated. Could say a lot more about it. But yeah, I'd say we just have to be listening to those impacted by the process and trying to work with them and for them. But, you know, just face the reality of it. There's only so much we have and we have to sustain it for everyone.
Great. Or not so great, as the case may be, but forward. Which are the stakeholder groups that you will bring together to address the county's housing crisis for low and middle income families? And what will be your highest priority strategies for this problem?
Yeah, so there's, you know, I've been renting in Bellingham for over 10 years and seen like rental rates going up by like, I think it was like 50% per year for several years, costs, costs of, you know, home values rising as well. It was a 25% increase in value and on average in the last year alone. And we know it's because of a market system. I mean, fundamentally, the goals of land and property ownership as an investment to accrue wealth through is just in conflict with the goal of having them remain affordable for people to access. You know, if incomes were rising and, you know, we want economic development and higher wages and all of that to meet that problem. But it's, it's just, there's a, there's an incompatibility there. And I think, you know, some folks are in favor of, you know, deregulation and trying to do everything they can to, you know, increase sprawl development and lower the cost of building and cut important environmental regulations to do it. And that's not, that at the best could have a modest impact on housing costs. Fundamentally, you know, what we need is non-market development through public, public or nonprofit supported development. And I think that absolutely, a really effective proven model that I'd like to see expanded and particularly support the expansion of is the Community Land Trust. We have Colson Community Land Trust here that allows folks access to essentially homeownership without having to buy the land and without, without having the land be this market-driven speculated value that drives up a cost, but rather gives people access to affordable home for as long as they want to live there and then leaves it affordable for the next family to come in when they're ready to move on. And we need, the county can be doing a lot more, I think, to help with acquiring property and supporting that kind of development and also incentivizing people to donate property into them. There's, you know, regulatory changes that need to be made and as well as just, you know, funding and program support. And basically just where the county has, I think, a major role is in their ability to access or incentivize the use of what's now just underutilized property, both within the cities, on the outskirts of the UG, urban growth areas. And, you know, promote density and development without, you know, without expanding those growth areas, hopefully, you know, preserving farmland and wildlife and resource lands and all that. I think we can have, and you can have density and infill as well in ways that, you know, still, you know, can be compatible and preserving, you know, the character of Bellingham and, and other cities and what we, what folks, the community folks have here. But yeah, it's just, there's got to be a lot more of it. And, and we need to be doing everything we can to make projects happen now and in the next few years.
Yes. Sure. Okay. A number of Waukam County resident constituent groups, pardon me, sometimes feel unsafe due to discrimination and/or being targeted. Identify some of those groups and three or four specific ways that you, as a council member, would seek to expand and extend protection services and access to support some of those groups.
Sorry, cut it, cut out a little bit. Was it, was, you mind repeating part of that question?
Absolutely. This is about constituency groups that might feel unsafe due to discrimination and being targeted. And so I would like you to identify some of those groups in some ways that, like, what are, what are those groups and what are the ways that you, as a council member, would, would be able to protect them?
Well, yeah, this is a, yeah, I think this, this is a really important issue. There's just definitely huge disparities by all metrics, you know, through what we know, what I hear directly from people in their experience around, you know, not only bread and butter, things like access to housing and jobs, but in treatment by law enforcement or county sheriff's office, you know, especially folks in the, who are like undocumented farm workers or tribal members or not white or not looking, you know, a certain way or getting disproportionately targeted. And I think it's just, there's a lack of oversight or accountability mechanisms that we need that I think it is the role of council to step up and provide. And I'd like, you know, anyone to know that as a council member, they come to me to make sure that if someone is going to look into it, but we should have established community boards for that. And then it's, yeah, I mean, it's racism systemic and it's not really an issue. It's not so much a matter of like individuals prejudices as it is. You look at ways are, you know, systems that were built a certain way and for certain people and around a white majority are continuing to perpetuate these things without anyone intending to. We got to be addressing that critically. So, you know, I'd look to the important work of our Waukam County Racial Equity Commission that's, that's forming and partnership with the Check and the Health Foundation and, you know, the recommendations for ordinances and policies that'll be coming from them. And we'll hope to work closely with them. And, and just being open and receptive. I think there's, you know, definitely in huge disparities in our, in the jail, in wealth gaps, in educational attainment. I think for, you know, you got to go up and down on it. And I think you got to also separate just issues of equity from issues of, you know, justice and discrimination and oppression, which, you know, they're related. But let's see, there's, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, also, you know, great organizations locally like community, community development and, you know, formerly just farmer community union and, and aligned allies that are, you know, do a lot of things to highlight and mobilize folks for justice. You know, I've been proud to march with them and show up in the number of instances, but, you know, it's, it's, and you got to, it got to be, got to be keeping good communication and partnership and listening to folks. There's a lot the county could do to essentially open up more channels for like actually hearing from folks. There's a lot of barriers, I think, to, you know, reaching or moving things through the established processes that we could do a much better job in increasing accessibility for engagement. A lot of that's going to happen outside of just the regular council meeting. So, yeah, I think there's, you know, as far as concrete plans, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of complicated measures. But when it comes down to it, it's just got to be a top priority. We got to, you know, look through the lens at all of our decisions.
Great. What current proposals before council or new proposals would you bring to council that would increase the mental health resources for our most vulnerable population?
So, you know, there's a, you know, you can point to like, you know, you know, thing, thing, all these things that are being done. You know, we have community health clinics that, you know, provide counseling services. We have, you know, tremendous addiction recovery services. We have, you know, the, some nice measures taken and, you know, the, the lead and grace programs where, you know, folks are getting more access or the, you know, the, the crisis destabilization or stabilization center that's been built, you know, through the sheriff's department. But it's, when it comes down to it, right, mental health will, like, people will be in for mental health when they're living in extremely unhealthy environments, right? When you're in constant stress and subject to probably, in most cases, a lot of physical pain and emotional pain and exhaustion and sleep deprivation and uncertainty that comes with being unsheltered or even sheltered, right? And then surrounded by, you know, 100, 200 other people in the shelter that can be dangerous to you. That's with no privacy or. With no privacy or, you know, personal space or ownership, like. No person would be mentally healthy in that situation. So, I mean, obviously as we're like housing first. Um, you know, getting people out of that into a better environment, um, you know, as a first step, uh, you know, no matter how much otherwise treatment you could give. But yeah, I mean, it's like health, mental healthcare is, is, is essential, like every other kind of healthcare there is. And we've had a major issue is that, you know, there's, yeah, it's, there's not enough of it, um, and the folks that work in it are underpaid and overworked. And so you have. You know, they're, they're not valued enough to where, you know, it's hard to continue working in it. My partner, uh, who I live with has worked. Is a community, is a mental health counselor. Many of our clients are homeless or have been. Been working in clinics over the past five years and it's hard for people to stay in that long term when, um. They're just not, you know, they're not supported. And we've seen cutbacks and removals of those services instead of increasing in the last year. So. Um, you know, you could, I think we need to be, it's like labor standards and looking at, um, improving how this, the treatments are administered is, is huge. Not just like throwing more money at it and, um. You know, I think. Yeah, I mean, mental, like. Mental health is going to be an issue for so many people, whether they're homeless or not, um, it's clearly. Uh, an aspect of it. And I think we gotta. You know, it's not the easiest thing to solve for any person, but we could be, we gotta be doing a lot more and we gotta be accessing every, you know, available funding stream we can and expanding it and. The health department could be doing more to step up in that area, I believe.
Thanks for the answer, Eddie. Um, this next, uh, question is just about coalition building, so it's a little. Move away from that. Um, a few of the previous questions I've asked you about what you would do in the future on various issues. For this question, we'd like to know about a specific example where you have brought together a wide array of diverse people and or groups to accomplish a task. We're not looking for a theoretical answer, rather we want to know about a specific time where you brokered a successful partnership or coalition of diverse players.
Sure. Well, in my, you know, previous role at resources, I worked in a lot of coalitions, um, you know, there was coalitions of. Mostly environmental NGOs, but other groups, um. And activists working around proposing. Coal export proposals and, um, and then, you know, through the Climate Alliance for Jobs and Food Energy, working with labor unions. I'm also at the Blue Green Waterfront Coalition that I was a key partner in with the Northwest Central Labor Council. Looking to find common ground and on development and on climate and, uh, and, you know. Finding ways to work with each other, even though we might. Not always be aligned on, on every issue. Had a lot of experience in that, um, you know, coming to work in the climate initiatives like I sixteen thirty-one and, um. Lot of policies that, you know, lobbied for in coalitions at the local and the state level. But I'd say my greatest, uh, you know, I'd say. What I would tout as, as the greatest experience in that was. In mid-two thousand twenty, forming a stakeholder group with the fossil fuel companies that had been. You know, I've been, you know, working in opposition to for so many years around, um, putting rules in at Cherry Point. Able to finally get, after years of trying, get them to, to sit down and have hundreds of hours of meetings and negotiations. Over the course of a year to, um, actually come to, you know, essentially. Resolve all of the, the objections or the, the biggest issues they had with, you know, specific aspects of the regulations that the council had proposed. And resolve them and, and find ways that could actually achieve the regulatory purpose and goals that we had and everything that we'd sought out to do, you know, for environmental, public health and safety reasons. And achieve those objectives while still, you know, giving the industries assurance that they'd be able to navigate these regulations, accept them like other ones that they have to follow and adapt to. Um, and continue to, uh, succeed as businesses and face the, you know, upcoming energy transition that's underway now. And, you know, that was, um. Painstaking and, uh, often very challenging and, you know, was able to, um. Yet I think we took a lot of pride in, in the, the extent to which we were still able to form like really solid working relationships, set really clear. Sort of parameters around and transparency around what are, you know, what our objectives were, what are, what are lines and, 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 um. You know, basic core tenants were and finding creative solutions whereby, you know, we could. Uh, actually satisfy concerns on both sides, uh, or satisfy one without. You know, diminishing the others through complex technical regulatory wording that we negotiated word by word, um, around, uh. Permitting for oil refineries. So that was, you know, having gone through that, um. It was incredibly challenging and I'm proud of the success and the outcome, um, that ultimately as I said, resulted in a unanimous county council though. And so, yeah, I learned a lot through that and I think I could take that to working on any issue.
Wow, and thank you for your, um. Adherence to Karen's signs. Um, we're going, going along quite well. Um, so we're now, you have. A, a closing statement or reflection and, um. Say whatever you'd like to say, Gus.
Well, um. You know, I stepped into this race, uh, in. It was the last day of filing week, um, hadn't been planning to run. The opportunity was put in front of me when my friend, Terrence Morris called and said he was going to be backing out of running for county council. Had a, had a strong campaign going thus far, but for, you know, his. Reasons for his personal health, he asked me to pick up the torch and I decided to. And, you know, I've been heartened and encouraged so much by all the support I've gotten from so many people that I respect and admire and organizations. That have given me their, their backing, like the Wacom Democrats and Riveters Collective and Sierra Club and. Washington Conservation Voters and number of local elected officials and individuals. Who do such great work in this community and, um, so I take that to heart. I'm, uh. Looking to serve, um, in this role that I've prepared for over the last decade. And, you know, continue to work every day and trying to drive bold policy changes through our county, despite all the difficulties in that. Listening, engaging stakeholders as, as best we can and, and not backing down from the great challenges we face on climate, on housing, um, on. You know, it's every, all the issues that we talked about today and these, you know, these important questions that you asked and. I want to work with and for all of you and everyone here. And, uh, you know, so I'd be honored by, by folks' votes or support, uh, when it comes down to it, either way, I, you know, I want to be. Working toward the same end for, for and with this community, uh, for years to come. So, um. Thanks again for, you know, uh, engaging like this and giving me the opportunity and more folks the opportunity to hear from me. And I'm. Always available if you want to call, email, any questions directly, uh, you know, as a candidate or as a council member or person. I'm always happy to, you know, talk directly, hear from you about ideas you have, concerns, interests. You know, that's, I, I, I want to be accessible as possible all the time. So I know that, that, that's there and you can, um, go to my website, edifyforwhat.com. You know, I can put my contact information maybe when you, when you send out the thing, but, um. There's a, yeah, just three weeks to go and. We're, uh, we're going to do our best. It's going to be up to voters to decide and. Yeah, just like the. Say, yeah, just appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you.
We, we still have five. We don't have fifteen, but we have five minutes.
Sure. Um, so just a couple of questions from our, um, immediate, uh, audience here. Mary, you have a question?
I did. Eddie, thanks for running. Been watching your work for years. This is about broadband. And this is, you know, given the need, which is widely acknowledged for universal access. The port, the P U D in the city of Bellingham all are developing plans to create this access. And I know the county exec is tracking at least the P U D in port very closely. How do you, what do you think the path forward or the paths forward are going to be with this important project?
Yeah, this is a, it's such a, it's so essential. Access to internet service is, is, it's a core utility as much as anything else in this day and age, uh, and. You know, it's, I think, very regrettable that our public utility district, uh, didn't begin building a public broadband. Fiber optic cable network twenty years ago when they were empowered to, uh, you know, the responsibility was deferred. We had a. Have a corporate telecom monopoly taking over that does not, um, serve people equitably. There's so many folks. Uh, that do not have access to reliable and high-speed internet service. That became even. Greater issue, of course, during the pandemic and people having to work or go to school from home or rely on it for their, you know, basic. Social connections and in contact with the outside world in a very difficult time for everyone. Uh, it was a tragedy and it could have been prevented, you know, Skagit County had been, has a, you know, Skagit net and a. Public dark fiber network that's been being built for years. Um, you know, the county. The county role here is going to be, of course, in partnership with. You know, the port has started working on this, uh, and the public utility district, um, and allies on the commission there working on it. Um, and I think what's, you know, critical here is, uh, you know, the county's role in, um, you know, around right of ways and permitting and funding and, and working to, you know, get. The information and the resources to make this build out happen is going to be key. Uh, whoever ends up being, you know, mostly responsible for it, I think the P U D is best suited. There need, it needs to be open access so that there's open competition for internet service providers and there should be a public option. And that should be guaranteed, you know, low cost and high speed, uh, for, for everybody, um, and. Yeah, cable is just, it's just more reliable and, you know, it's, it's, it's better than wireless in so many fronts without getting the technical aspects of it. It's improvable over time. And more resilient. So we're, you know, we. We need to be doing this. I think your dig ones policies are going to help, uh, whereby, you know, that could ensure that when, um, you know, you can lower the cost and, uh, efficiency of building it. Limiting, you know, public works, right, you know, service, you know, work disruptions, but. Ultimately, we'll still take a long time if we rely only on dig ones, um, as far as a build out plan. You know, we can definitely identify some of the places that are in greatest need, especially in the rural areas now. You know, and, and work on serving them the same way, you know, in the nineteen thirties, there was this huge effort to, you know, federally backed, of course, to. Bring people electricity, um, and when, you know, lots of places in America still didn't have it, that's what we have to do with internet now. And, um. You know, that's, uh. Going to be, yeah, it's a major, major priority in infrastructure and, um. Is, uh, yeah, we're going to be, going to be working on it and hope to make a lot of progress as fast as we can.
Thank you. We have just a couple of minutes. Does anybody? Michael?
No, I, I was just saying one minute. Maybe we should do the thanks.
We can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Trying to think of something inspirational to say, but we just so appreciate, uh, that you're running, Eddie, that, um, you know, we just have such. Regard for anybody that steps up and does all this hard work of talking, um. So much with people and so, um, thank you and, um. We wish you the best. For your future.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time and, yeah, feel free to follow up anytime and, um. Make sure you have all the information you need, but yeah, and, uh. Appreciate it. I look forward to seeing y'all again virtually or in person soon.
Thanks.